I need to.
I thought I had turned on, but my ringer was still on.
I have on because my mom's been sick. She's getting better.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us on this delightful Monday evening for our MSD of Warren Township School Board Forum 2024. My name is Michelle Shuffett. I am the secretary for our Warren Township Council PTA. And just a quick introduction here of the people involved in tonight's forum. For the PTA council volunteers, we have Veronica, who's a greeter here out in the lobby. We have Diane Simon on the stopwatch. She'll keep things moving along tonight. And then we have Catherine Basham as our emcee for the evening. She'll be presenting the questions to the potential board members. I'll go ahead and introduce our board members or those up for election this November. They are in just alphabetical order from left to right. We have Howard Dorsey. We have Julie French. We have Candy Hopkins. We have LaShawna Triplett, and we have Gloria Williams here tonight. So in November, when you go to the poll, we have four spots up to fill. You'll be able to vote for four candidates when you go to the polls this November. So let's just get this started, get on our way, and then get everybody home for the evening. I'm going to introduce Catherine Basham, and she's going to take it into the. She's gonna, what is it called when you do the?
Conclusion?
Yeah. Trivia, trivia. She's going to take it into the trivia portion of the evening. So thanks for joining us.
Okay. Okay. Welcome again. Thank you, guys, for volunteering to participate in tonight's forum. So the very first part of tonight's event will be, we are allocating two-minute introductions for each candidate. So we'll start with Howard Dorsey, and we will move left to right. Everybody will have two minutes. With 30 seconds left, Diane Simon will raise her hand and give you that little notification so that you know. But like I said, everybody gets two minutes to introduce themselves to the public. So, Mr. Dorsey, you are first.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. Hello, my name is Howard Dorsey. Of course, I'm a current school board member. A little bit about me, personally, I'm a retired Army officer. My wife is in the back there, Shirley. Wave, Shirley. Yeah, we've been living, we've been here in the district since 85, I believe, and my initial assignment was was here. And we've got three daughters. They're all off doing doing wonderful things, very successful. But they all matriculated through the Warren Township community and school district. When we first got here, well, let me back up a little bit, and I just got to give you some words about my military experience. I got informed that we were coming here, and I said, I've never been to Indiana. I don't even know where that place is. And we were in Germany at the time. And so I said, hey, could you, could you send me something about Indiana? So I got this book called Welcome to Indiana. And while I was there, I read the book. And so I became very familiar with Indiana and history and that sort of thing. And I said, okay, what am I going there for? And they said, well, you're going to teach combat tactics and training and that sort of thing to the National Guard. I said, okay, can do that. And so anyway, brought my family here. We moved to, we looked around a while, and there was no question that Warren Township was where we wanted to, where we wanted to land. And and so we did, and we settled here. All my, like I said, all my girls went through, they had been going back and forth. We've been around the world a couple, three or four times. And these kids have been like, you know, you hold the old, heard the old adage, Army brats. Well, my kids were getting there. And so we we came here, and they loved it here and thrived and did real well here. So that's a little bit about me. I won't say anything more, but it was, it's been, it's been a nice ride here and in Warren Township.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Julie French, you are up next.
Hi, my name is Julie French. We have lived, my husband, Rick, is a teacher out in Franklin Township. We've lived in Warren Township for 27 years. Our oldest daughter had some special needs, and so when we started looking around for schools, there was a couple of things we were looking for. The SPED program, and then she, we felt she would benefit very much from the year-round schools that were in Warren Township at the time. And that was a big reason for us moving here. So Lowell was our first school, and then our kids went to Stony, our middle school was Stony Brook and Raymond Park. Between our three kids, and then they all graduated from Warren Central High School. I have been very much involved with the PTA in in the past and still a little bit now. And I am currently on the board, and I'm the legislative liaison for the current board. I'm also a fed-ledged network person for the ISBA Indiana School Boards Association. I don't know. I love Warren Township. When we moved out here, my husband said anywhere but Franklin Township because he didn't want to feel like he was going to be in a fishbowl. And so when we looked around, we found Warren and just made our home here, and we plan on staying here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Candy Hopkins, you are up next.
I almost feel like the long-lost second cousin or something. But my name is Candy Hopkins Candace, but everyone calls me Candy. I have been in Warren Township over 20, not quite 25 years, my son and I. My son is an H, he attended Warren Township Schools. He's an HVAC technician. So I'm not worried about air conditioning or heat or anything like that. I'm a GAMI. I'm so excited. I tell everybody everywhere I go and talk about, whatever I talk about, I work my granddaughter into the conversation. I'm so excited to be a GAMI. She's four years old, going on 40. And when I first moved to Warren Township, obviously, you know, you kind of check out the school system, and I found out that my absolute favorite teacher in the world from middle school was a teacher at Warren Central High School. And I'm like, okay, that did it for me. I didn't care if if the school system was crappy, as long as Mr. Sylvie was there, there was something good about it. And I found out that, you know, this was a great school system, so I was really excited. My son did not graduate from Warren because it has something to do with football. I'm not going into that long story. Football in Seymour, Indiana. I'm not going into that story. But I'm glad to be here, and I'm excited to potentially be working with with this group. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. LaShawna Triplett, you are up next.
Ms. Hopkins, you don't have to feel like the second cousin because we're all family. One thing about Warren, Warren will pull it all together. My name is LaShawna Triplett, and I am a proud mother of four and married to my husband Fletcher. My profession comes from, I am a CASA, so I'm a court-appointed advocate for youth. My husband and I own our own nonprofit where we work with youth who may have some mental health, behavioral health, and just providing academic support. So I'm community. I love community. I love working in the community. We have started a ranch with equestrian therapy and agriculture to be able to provide fresh, more produce into our Warren community. I just love Warren. I've been in here over 19 years. I've had three children who, is it three, one, two, three? Yep. Who have graduated from Warren. So I am just really excited about being here and being able to bring my trauma experience, my community experience, and providing another lens to the board. It's been wonderful working on the board thus far. So if I'm re-elected again, I will continue to thrive, to advocate for safer schools, higher academic standards to ensure our teachers have, you know, quality pay, and that our schools is a place for our families to want to come, and they can feel safe that their children are here. Thank you for the space.
Thank you, Ms. Triplett. Gloria Williams, you are up next.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gloria Williams, and I was born here in Indianapolis, Indiana. I graduated from IUPUI with my bachelor's and master's in education and also a master's in counseling. I worked for 34 years in Indianapolis Public School System, teaching all grade levels and also counseling in the schools. After retirement, while I worked for 34 years, and then I retired. After retirement, I didn't really retire. I continued working as an after-school tutor. Then I decided to become a home-based therapist for the Department of Child Services. And after that, I began to mentor young women in the community with their children that were struggling. And I continue to work with the homeless and the nursing home programs. I am just one that care about working and helping others. Right presently, I'm on the nominating committee for ISBA. And I had three children to graduate from Warren. And my daughter worked at Lowell Elementary School as a teacher, and she also was a math coach, and now she's a principal. And my son, he's a successful college graduate. He works at Howard University in management information systems there. And my last son, he is an entrepreneur. I have served on the school board now for, ooh, for eight years. And I would love to continue to use my educational knowledge and my expertise to help Warren Township continue being the best school in the city. Oh, I would like to say also, my husband passed away two years ago. He was a retired school bus driver. I definitely wanted to say something about him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Okay. Up next, after our introductions, is a quick trivia question. Everybody has their little whiteboard, correct? So how it's going to work is I'm going to ask a question. You're going to write the answer, then hold it up. I'm going to tell you what the correct answer is, and then we move on to the next question. So it's just fun, fun questions about the district, whether it's building, staff, students, things of that nature. And we have 10 questions. Okay, so if we are ready, question number one. How many elementary schools are in the district? And then when you have your answer, go ahead and hold it up. The answer is nine. Correct. Question number two, after you've erased, sorry, I'll give you time to do that. Okay, question number two. How many intermediate and middle schools are in the district? Go ahead and hold up your answers. Three, that is correct. Question number three. What is the name of our Warren Township Career Center? When you are ready? The Walker Career Center. Correct. Okay, question number four. What is the name of our preschool? What is the name of the preschool? Everybody almost done? It's a lengthy one. Yep, the Warren Early Childhood Center. Correct. Okay, question number five. What is the name of our community center? I like how you guys abbreviated it. The Morehead Community Resource Center. Okay. Question number six. Approximately how many students are currently enrolled in the district? And you can round, so don't try to get specific, but how many students are currently in the district? 11,473. Guys are really close. Good job. Okay, question number seven. What grade levels does the Warren Online Academy serve? What grade levels does Warren Online Academy serve? K through 12. Question number eight. How many buses run for Warren Township daily? Now, we got nine elementary schools, three middle schools, one high school. Eighty-five, but that is 550 routes. So there's quite a lot of bus routes. Or routes, however you want to say it, bus routes. Okay. Number nine. How many full-time teachers are in the district? Seven hundred and forty-five. Okay, last question. So you have 745 full-time staff. Now we're going to add in also our part-time staff in addition to anybody else. We're talking all, I mean, all staff, all full-time staff, not just teachers. Okay, this is the last question, so I mean, it's not, it's not that tricky. But give it your best shot. How many total part-time, full-time staff work in the district? I know. We'll remember that in two years. But you guys are all really close. 1,791 total staff in the district. Okay, so that wrapped up the 10-minute trivia question. I'm going to give you guys a five-minute break real quick, and then the PTA committee is going to go out in the hallway. We're going to grab any of the additional questions that were submitted from those that are in person today, and then I'm going to come back with the question and answer series where each of you will have four minutes to respond to the same question. So we'll be right back.
So we have to get something. It's probably five. One of the vision, who sent us out and told us they would give us a penny a worm that we collected. So we went out at night, we're collecting all these worms, all these worms, and we come back and we give them all these worms. We think we're going to get a penny worm. We got two. Then we had to give one away. I mean, really. I love her hair. Midis too, so whoever does. Side forces came in and started putting big bucks into. Isn't it a lot? And so you had a lot of political parties in there that took away the non-partisanship that the board is supposed to have. It's because they want that prize. It's a cricket. What is, what's the prize? I got to be able to get this prize. And she just sent me a picture of a cricket.
Okay. There were quite a few questions. There were quite a few questions that were asked out there. So we have selected four to begin with, and we'll see how long we can, you know, go. But like I said, we'll ask the question, or I'll ask the question. And then each of you will have up to four minutes. You don't have to take the full four minutes, but if you do, great. Diane will signal you again when we're down to the thirty seconds. And then we'll go to the next candidate, and they can address the same question. So without further ado, the first question. Why are you running? What motivates you to serve? So we're going to start with you, Mr. Dorsey, and we'll go down the line. Then with question two, we'll start with you, Ms. French, and go down the line. So we'll switch up the order a little bit. But, Mr. Dorsey, why are you running? What motivates you to serve?
What was the second portion?
What motivates you to serve?
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, let me just say that. Thank you for, for having us. And I thank the other members being here as well. The reason I'm running, first of all, I got a little tenure. I was on the board once before. What, 2003 to 2009? And we had a, we, we did some great, wonderful things. And I thought it could not get any better than that. But then I found out that it can get better than that. And we currently have a board that has proven that on many, many occasions. Why I ran was because I thought that I still had something in the tank. I still, I thought I still have something I can contribute to the district. I wasn't done yet. I used to be. I worked in the district for about four years. And I sort of learned a lot as a result of that. And then after I left the board, after I left that job, but before I left the board, or after, and after I left the board, there was a space in between there, where I was on the board, went away, got hired by the district, went away, and, but was still in the, in the community. And I thought that having been here a while, having three daughters that have matriculated through elementary, middle school, and also the high schools, the high school, I thought maybe I could still come back and do some things. I liked the way we were, we were moving. I wanted to be a part of that. Very great district has proven that time and time again. And I just thought that, you know, maybe, maybe I should give it a shot. And, and so I did. I ran and I, and I got on the board. What motivates me is the fact that I think, like I say, I think I have something to give. I've got a master's degree in administration and education. I think I could help not only the board, but also the staff. Superintendent and his great staff, I thought that maybe I could provide some assistance there. And anything else that would, that would help us move forward. I like to be with a winner, and I think Warren Township, the district, is a winner. And, and so I thought it was an opportunity that I just couldn't turn around. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. French. Why are you running and what motivates you to serve?
Well, kids. I have always had a passion for kids. I, I taught a youth girls' summer baseball, softball program when I was in high school. And I did Special Olympics in college. And I got involved with my own kids, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, and dance, and just their lives, and, and their activities. And then I got very involved in PTA. Anybody who knows me knows that I was, I lived in that for a while. I got more involved in the middle school time. I, when I was at the elementary level, I helped. I was never on the board. I helped with different things, and I did help with the talent show. That was my big thing that we did there. But we also, when I got to middle school, I was on the board. And then I got involved at the high school and at the council level. And, and then I got a phone call one day from a PTA friend. And she said, hey, have you ever thought about running for the board? And I actually hadn't at that point, but then I started thinking about it, and I talked to my husband. And it just seemed like that was the next step. You know, I, I was doing a lot at the local level with PTA. And I thought, that's the next step, you know? And I got involved, and I started doing legislative stuff. And I understand the importance of being available and talking with our senators and our legislators. Indiana's a rough place for public schools, if you don't know that. I'll be glad to talk to you about it. It's a passion. But I just continue doing that. My, my kids one time asked me, Mom, why are you still helping with robotics? Why are you still helping with choir boosters? Because I had two girls in choir for a while. And, and so I was doing that a little while longer after they had graduated. And I, I told them, I said, you know, I loved kids before I had kids. So it just seems the next step. And, and it's always been kids first. It's always been what is in the best interest of kids. And that's what I love about Warren, because it's a nonpartisan board. And everybody on the board is very concerned about kids. And they're not looking at Democrat, they're not looking at Republican. They're looking at what's in the best interest for the kids. And whether we agree on everything or not, that is the center focal point that we all have. And, and because of that, we work together and we compromise, and we come up with what we feel as a group, working with our superintendent as to what's in the best interest for the kids.
Thank you. Ms. Hopkins. Why are you running and what motivates you to serve?
Okay. Initially, I was asked to run, and I'm like, well, why? I talk to a lot of parents, a lot of parents in my family, because my family is humongous. Humongous, my extended family. And we have a lot of family in Warren and obviously outside of Warren. But just kind of talking to a lot of my family and neighbors and friends. And I hear a lot of things, you know, going on good and bad. And that's in every district, obviously. So I'm, I'm a problem solver. I like to kind of throw things out there. And, and so, you know, in a lot of conversations, it just always came, well, you know, Ms. Candy, everybody calls me Ms. Candy. Ms. Candy, why don't you run for the school board? And I'm like, well, you know, okay, maybe, maybe let me think about it. I decided to go ahead and toss my hat in the ring. My passion is not just problem solving, but children and seniors. That is my all-time passion, children and seniors. You mess with children, you mess with seniors, you got me to contend with. And just kind of, so that's kind of why I just decided, okay, I'm going to go ahead. I see, just kind of following the board, you know, over the last year or so, there's a good board here. I will say, there are some really, really good people on this board. And I felt some kind of way at first, because I'm like, well, you know, why fix it if it's not broken? But I thought then, I'm like, well, you know, in every vehicle, you need an oil change. So to keep things running smoothly, you needed an oil change. So, you know, I thought that I could help keep it running smoothly. And as far as my motivation, kind of looking at the world right now and the children. I was, I was working with a group of young women, and it was called Girl Talk. And just kind of hearing the situations and the issues that they face at this juncture of their teenage, like, most of them were teenagers, some pre-teen. But the things that are going on in their lives, the things that they face in school, the things that they see, I'm like, you know what, I'm, I have to, instead of complaining about it, I have to, I felt like I had to either put up or shut up. Just, you know, if I'm going to help, I have to help. And I have to go to the top to help, because sometimes working your way up doesn't work. Sometimes it works better when you work, you go from the top down. So that's kind of my motivation. Just kind of listening, listening and assessing and thinking about how I can help, how I can be of assistance. And I really feel like I can. I really feel like I can. I was just telling them up here, I said, you know, I said, even if I don't get elected, I said, make an alternate or something. I said, because this is a really good group. So I'm just excited to, just to be a candidate. And I'm going to do whatever I can. And one more thing. I am a firm believer in reaching out to parents. I want the parents to be involved, be involved as much as possible. And I will reach out. I am that person. I'm not the, you know, great whiz behind the curtain. I'm going out there and I'm going to engage parents. Let's do this. Let's do this. These are your babies. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Triplet. Why are you running and what motivates you to serve?
Originally, when I ran for school board, is because I worked along with, with Ryan and Mr. Taylor in providing some tutoring and behavioral support to scholars in the ESP program that were on, like, waivers. And versus them being expelled, they would report to our facility. And getting to know those scholars and their families and just being able to help them at a different level, because alternative education is my passion, special needs, that is where I thrive. That is what I love. So again, a few other parents and some of the students was like, Ms. Triplet, why don't you run for school? And I was like, eh, I do enough. So I'm on enough boards. But after talking to them, reviewing, you know, the board, and just seeing what I could do to bring to the table is to provide my community lens, my trauma lens. If anybody knows me, they know I'm community, community, community. I love working with the community. I love working, like you said, with parents and the children. When we have events, I'm in the dirt, you know? I'm the one, I'm serving. I'm a server, and that's why I wanted to be on the board, to serve. Why I'm running for reelection is because I feel as though the board has made great pathways with coming through COVID and getting back on track. We may not make every decision that everybody agrees with or thinks is the right decision, but I promise you, we make the best decision for what we're given. Because one thing, like Julie said, we all have one thing in common. We love the children. We love the families. We love Warren. I love Warren. So I want to continue what we have started. I feel as though my work's not done yet, and I have some more to give to the board. And as long as I feel as though I can give a hundred percent of who I am and what I can bring to the table with my morals, my values, my education, my community lens, and my trauma lens, I would still love to continue to provide those tools and qualities to the board and to our families to make Warren stronger and stronger and stronger and stronger. So that's why I'm serving. And what motivates me is to see those babies walk across that stage and to be able to shake their hand. That motivates me more than anything, to see our children graduate, because knowledge is power. Thank you for the space.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, you're up next. Why are you running and what motivates you to serve?
I'm running. That, that's interesting, you use the word running. I've been running in this educational process for a long time, and I'm not tired yet. I tell you, I have done great things throughout my teaching career. And as I said before, I've taught all grade levels. And in my teaching career, I went back and also became a school counselor, because there were people were saying, gosh, we're having problems in the classroom with students. Can you help? And it seems like they were putting students in my classroom, and I was able to help them. So I said, well, let me go back and become a counselor. And that's how I got into school counseling. I found joy in helping those students that were having difficulty, those families that were struggling. And I just loved it. So after retiring after thirty-four years, that's why I worked for the Department of Child Services. I helped children reunite with their families. And it was just a thrill, just working with these children, you know, trying to get them back with their families, going to court, being an advocate for them. So I just love children, and I love working with the community and the families. And that's just me, that's what I do. And so I've been on the board for eight years. And I feel that I have been using my knowledge, my expertise, in trying to help Warren Township be the best that they can be. And I want to continue doing that. I feel that, you know, I still have a lot to offer. I still have a lot. We work together well as a board. And, you know, I think that that's great. And we all have our different things that we contribute. And so when we put all that together, we do great things for our students and our families and our community. Some of the things that we have accomplished throughout these years has been amazing. It's really amazing when you work together and you have love and compassion for what you do. And so therefore, I'm excited about being on the board again. I wish that you would vote for me, because I really am excited about continuing this work. Like I said, I've been running for a long time, and I'm not tired yet.
Thank you. Okay. Question two. This will be for Ms. French. You'll lead us off. What are your feelings on charter and public schools?
Charter schools are supposed to be public schools as well. They're public schools, but they, initially when they were set up, they were set up to be different. The bad thing about charter schools right now is that they are run a lot of times by for-profit companies. Their boards are not open. That means when they meet, there isn't a room like this where anybody can come in and listen. They can pretty much do whatever they want and go there. Public schools have accountability and have to follow certain rules. And their law book is like this big when you go back and look. And they are accountable to the State Board of Accounts. They are accountable to the public. They are accountable to the legislature, everybody. I feel if, if, and this is not only public and charter schools, but also private schools. If you are taking funds from the taxpayers, then you should all be on a level playing field. You should be, have the same accountability as the public schools. You should follow the same rules. I mean, public schools take anyone. Charter schools, private schools, it's their, it's not, they say it's school choice. It is school choice. The school chooses, not the other way around, not the parents choosing. If the kids, if the, if the charter school or the private school don't really want that child, they'll wait till after ADM count day, and poof, that child ends up back in public school. And we take them. And we take them in, and we love them, and we teach them and everything, but we don't get funded for that. And I think that that needs to change. And so, I, I don't know, I haven't been watching you. Am I close on time? Oh, oh, great, okay. So anyway, I'm, I'm just going to say, public schools is the way to go. It's the cornerstone of our, of our community, of our nation. It's, it's how our kids are educated so that they can then become good citizens and continue on. So I think, does that help? That's charter schools, no. Public schools, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hopkins, you're up next. Same question. What are your feelings on charter versus public schools? What are your feelings on charter versus public schools?
Well, I would, um, my son attended a charter school for a little bit, so I would be a hypocrite if I said that, um, I'm completely against charter schools. His situation was he was, he went through a period where he was terribly, terribly bullied in, uh, the public schools. And, um, so I pulled him out, we pulled him out and he went to a charter school. And it wasn't really a bad situation, he just, he hated it, but it wasn't a bad situation. But I feel like as far as charters, well, for one, I came through public schools and I had got, I'm telling you, I got a wonderful education in the public school system. So I am a staunch advocate of the public school system. However, I feel like charter schools keep the public schools accountable. When you know, you know, I always say competition is the American way. So when you know that there's someone out there nipping at your heels, I feel like that should make you do better. I want Warren to be a, this district to be a blue ribbon district. And so in one respect, I'm glad that charter schools are there because it will make us be better. Or that's, that's just the way I look at it, it will make us be better, we have to be better. We ha, we, you start out, if you feel like you're better than them, well then, parents will want to send their kids here. They will want to send their kids to public school if the public school is better than the charter. The public school has to be better, they have to be better. And these charter schools are, they are nipping at our heels because they can offer things that public schools cannot. And I know it's a money issue, I do know that. As Ms. French said, they, they also have sponsorship and partnership from corporations. So, you know, their pockets are a little bit deeper. But that just means that the public schools have to be a little more creative and just to be better. And that's pretty much the way I feel about it. I don't, I'm not going to say I, I just hate charter schools. I love public schools better. But, you know, they, they, I feel like they, they are there to keep the public schools accountable. So we have to, you know, we have to be better, let's be creative and make the public schools a place where parents want their children to go. Because if, you know, if the public schools are the, the beacon on the hill, nobody's even going to consider a charter. They're not going to consider a private school. Because if this is, if, if Warren is up here, nobody's going to consider what's down there in the valley. That's not what we're even looking at. Because we want to look at the school that's the shining beacon. And I feel like public schools can be all of that, not just this public school, but since, you know, this is the one we're talking about. I feel like this can be that shining beacon. And I'm, I am so excited about that. I, my goal, I want Warren to be a blue ribbon school. I was looking at the list, the 2024 list, and I saw, it said Warren and I got all excited and it said Warren County, I'm like, oh shoot, that's not us. So, um, I would like to see Warren on that list. I would li, and, you know, who would even think about a, a charter school then? If we're on that list, nobody would even consider a charter. So that's kind of my feelings.
Thank you. Ms. Triplet, you're up next. What are your feelings on charter and public schools?
So, oh, that's a tough question for me because, um, my children have been in all of them. I am, as an educator, I homeschooled. They also went to a private school and they went to charter school and, um, but ultimately graduated from a public school. If you would have asked me this before, um, I got on the board, I would have said, um, the charter schools have more to offer. Since I've been a part of the board and realize the financial burden that public schools have to face with charter schools in their district, I have a different view of that. So I, my goal, and I agree with, um, Ms. Candy, that if we, as a public school, offered all the bells and whistles and we made our academics rigorous and we lived up to that high standard, then we, the charter schools would not be a competition. People choose an alternative because they feel as though they're not getting what they want in the public school system. So that's why I want to be a part of the school board to ensure that Warren is very competitive and that any charter school in our district, we are right there at the top of the line, which is going to make that parent have a hard choice to make. So, um, I believe in choice, you know, we all have our, that's where we're in America, we all have that right to choose. But I am highly invested now into public schools because I do see the great work and everyone cannot afford a private school or even afford to kind of take their children to a charter school because of transportation. So I think as a public school, um, public schools have everything that a family can need. It just depends on how we pull those resources together and how bad we want our district to be, a blue school or at the top of the line. So that is just kind of how I feel about that.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, what are your feelings on charter and public schools?
Well, that's a thought provoking question. Growing up, you know, I attended a public school because we couldn't afford to go to a private school. It costs too much. So therefore we were definitely in a public school. And, um, now, uh, I remember when charter schools started, uh, rising to the surface, I was a counselor at one of my elementary schools. And, um, it's basically giving, uh, parents a choice. You know, like she said, in our society, we love choices, whether it's in clothing, stores, food, you know, it's a matter of choice. But my concern is, um, we don't want anything to happen to our public school system because as I was growing up, like I said, it was great for me to be able to attend a public school because we couldn't afford, there were 10 kids in my family and we could not afford to go to a private school. So the public school offers resources for people that are, you know, not able to afford and, you know, to go to, uh, an alternate school. However, I know charter schools now, you know, you don't have to pay that tremendous price that we had to pay in private schools. But my concern is, we need to make sure that our public schools receive the funding that they need in order to continue. I think this is the problem, is the funding. You know, if we're going to be a public schools and we have a lot of people coming into the public school, we need money, you know, they say money talks. So therefore we need money, we need money to keep our buildings together. We need money to provide the resources, we need money to hire teachers, we need money to provide everything that these students and their families need. And what we're finding is, some of the money is being taken away from the public schools, which is causing a problem. So what I'm saying is, we need everything, I want everybody to have choice, but it's got to be fair. When I was going to the public school, we thought it was so unfair because we would look over at some schools, they had air conditioning, we had to raise our windows. We didn't have air conditioner in our schools. And I felt really bad, I was like, they're going to a school that has air conditioning, we don't have it. There was a lot of things that we didn't have in our building that I saw other buildings have. So what I'm saying is, it's all about being fair, you know? We serve a lot of people in the public school system. We open our doors to everyone, but we need money. We can't just do it because our heart is big. You know, in our society, with the cost of living going up, it takes money. And so therefore, I think that's where the controversy is. If we received all the money and resources that we need in order to keep our schools running, our public schools, I don't think it would be a problem. The charter schools could have their schools and we could have our schools and everybody could have a choice. So that's what I think about it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, what are your feelings on charter and public schools?
Well, I guess I could stop now, I mean, y'all said it. But no, they haven't all said it. Here's the deal. O, o, of course, there's money, there's no question about that. Everything boils down to the dollar bill. Everything do, boils down to who's getting what and how much is they're getting and why am I not getting my fair share? But I, I, I wrote down something like this here, I think there's room for everybody. I think there's room for choice, providing choice, but I think there's room for everyone. I, I liken it to, and I've used this before, I, I liken it to a chef salad. You know, our education process, period, is a big bowl and it's a chef salad. You got lettuce in there, you've got, I don't know if you got to put eggs in yours, but I put boiled eggs in my salad, there's some radish in there, a little bit of tomato, uh, tomatoes in there. And it's, the education process is made up of all of these things. So that, that chef salad is good for everyone. You've got to choose specifically what parts of that, uh, of that, uh, of that bowl you want, uh, you want. And so I, I, I'm saying it's, um, th, there's room for everybody. And I think that, uh, my, my, my thoughts on public school, I'm a product of public school. I love public schools. I was raised in a public school, Pittsburgh Public Schools. It was the, um, IPS of Pittsburgh, okay? That's what most of the kids went to school, went into public schools. Those outlying areas, uh, church schools and private schools and charter schools, uh, were there. But I didn't think there was anything else out there until I started playing football and we started traveling outside of Pittsburgh and starting to realize that in the suburbs, these guys had all kinds of resources that I didn't have. We had to oil down our football field just to keep the dust down, it wasn't in the grass. So we went to these other schools, they had grass there, so I didn't, we didn't fall, we didn't mind falling down and, and rolling in round and stuff because it was a softer field. The point is that the resources in the public schools are kind of like overshadowed by the outside. I say that too, to say that you got to be competitive. I don't shy away from a good fight. Public schools don't scare me, private schools don't scare me. We've got a super superintendent, we've got a super staff that supports that. I'll put our school up against anyone, whether it be a private school, public school, other public schools, charter schools, whatever. I think if you're performing superly well, superly well, I'll make my own word, product of public school system. It, it doesn't matter and, and that's how I feel about it. Yeah, we, we all know, we're not, you know, we've been doing this thing a while. We all know that there are some policies and procedures and things like that there that the public school correction, that the charter schools probably don't have to, to, to deal with. We know that, uh, a lot of the charter schools are for private, are private, you know, they're, they're, they're about the bottom for, for profit, they're about the bottom dollar. And they, uh, they do some things that, you know, we wouldn't particularly, uh, want to do or could get away with doing, uh, but that's beside the point. If you're competitive enough and you're that, that shining city on the hill, people going to gravitate to you, I don't care what you got. And that's one of the reasons why we moved to, like I told you earlier, how, how I got here. I would, we looked all over Indianapolis. My, my guy that was fine, trying to find a home for us, had me, uh, postured in Lawrence, right next to the, the fort that was up there at the time. And, uh, I had a chance to do some traveling and came to Warren and it was it. Uh, because they had that thing that appealed to me. And we weren't looking for money and we, we didn't mind paying taxes, we didn't, we didn't do all, any, any of that. We knew that we were at a good place. And so I, I say, don't be afraid of charter schools. As long as you're competing as strong as we are and doing as well as we are, we will outcompete them. And that's what we're doing, we're doing that. And so, um, I just want to say that, hey, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not afraid of charter schools. As long as we're performing real well, teaching our kids what they need to have and are the shining example out there, uh, that's what we need to be doing. We need to be that shining example, we'll draw them in and I think that's it. So that's my space.
Thank you. Okay, looking at the clock, it's eight o'clock almost. Do we have time for one more question or should we just wrap up? One, do one more question at least, does anybody have a problem with that? I think I might have told you one hour, it'd be about an hour or so. If we're going to go over it, it'd be about 20 minutes over, are we okay with that? At least one more question? Okay, then we will move forward, one more question. Um, and so this will be Ms. Hopkins, you'll be first up. It's a two-parter. What do you see as the biggest challenge within the school system and how do you plan to address this challenge?
From what I, as I said, I take my cue from, um, parents that I talk to. From what I recently heard and what I've heard the most is, I was, it seems that, let me see how, I want to make sure I say this the right way, the way I, it was told to me. There was a particular parent that I spoke with and usually I speak with a group. We, we talk in a group and they felt like their children are not being seen. Okay, this is what was, was, this is the way it was laid out. It was like, yes, you know, the kids come to school and they're taught, you know, the curriculum, they go through the, the school curriculum, but it's not really, and, and this is just a group of parents. They felt as if it wasn't really benefit, their children weren't really learning what they needed to learn. They were learning what they were told to learn. And which I thought was very interesting. It's like, you know, there's a preset curriculum, which there has to be, I understand that. But I think that kids need to be engaged more. What do they want? What would they like to see happen? There was a, um, a school district that I was looking at, a, a friend of mine was telling me about it and that I kind of checked out and they had something very interesting. They had what they called, um, a student school board. And I thought, oh wow, that's pretty, that's pretty cool. And I looked, you know, at Warren, because I'm like, well, you know, I don't want to bring it up if we already have one, I think that's an awesome idea. But what that was, that was just a group of students, um, I think juniors and seniors, that they created a kind of mini school board. And they came with their ideas because nobody can tell you what the kids want better than the kids. And then, you know, I'm a, I'm a huge advocate of bringing in parents. What do you have to say? These are your children. And I feel like parents, they send you the best that they have. Give them a voice, don't just tell them, this is what your child's going to do today and this, this, this and this. I want to know what you have to say. That's why I said, I'm going to get out there and get in your face. Because I want to know what parents have to say. But, um, I just feel like the kids need to be heard more. Just give them a voice. I, I know, as I said, I know, again, I'll say it again, I know there's a set curriculum. But I feel like kids need to have a voice as well. And, um, what was the second part of the question? I can get off on a tangent and just kind of.
The second part was, um, how do you plan to address the challenge?
Team, the team. I'm just one person. And, um, I feel like, you know, just to use an old tired cliche, teamwork makes the dream work. You bring your ideas to the team and, you know, as we see and as I've seen, this is a great team. So you bring your ideas to the team, you hash it out, you work through it, you, you throw the ideas out there, you brainstorm, see what works, what sounds good, what doesn't. And that's kind of how, you know, and whatever comes out in the wash, you throw it in the, the rinse and see what you end up drying. So that's how I would make that work, just kind of bring it before the team and go for it. See what we come up with.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Triplet, what do you see as the biggest challenge within the school system and how do you plan to address the challenge?
What I see as the biggest challenge, oh, that's a broad statement, is the diversity in, in our district, equipping our staff with, um, the tools to be able to work with the diverse population we have in Warren. And that means ensuring they understand trauma and ensuring that our climate and culture is, um, is culture sensitive. And if we can ensure our climate from our teachers, um, because if the teachers are, don't feel supported or they feel, you know, they're dysregulated, then of course the scholars are going to be dysregulated. So I think equipping our staff from our teachers supports. So I think equipping our staff from our teachers, support staff, admin, with the tools to be able to deal with our diverse community with our Haitian Creole, we have, you know, our Hispanic families, making sure that when they walk around Warren, everyone is represented. I know as an early childhood educator and when I first opened my daycare, one of the things for accreditation, I had to have pictures of, you know, everyone. If I had someone on a cane or, it had to be inclusive within my building and that's what I want to, I think the challenge with Warren is making sure everyone feels like Warren is a place that they can go and feel home. What I plan to do about it is what I've been doing, assisting with trauma training within our district, visiting the schools, ensuring that our staff, again, is equipped with the tools to be able to work with our, with our student population, with our parents, understanding the trauma. Sometimes you may have that angry parent that came in, but understanding she's not really angry at you, it's the situation. So like I always say, I told Dr. Hanson, our secretaries are our first line of defense. We need to equip them with the proper tools to be able to handle the parents and be able to calm them, you know, down and so they can feel heard. So I plan if I'm, for the rest of this year and if I'm reelected, to keep doing that, driving home those things to our admin, holding our cabinet accountable, holding our board accountable to ensure that these challenges become victorious statements that we can look back and say, they were stepping stones instead of stumbling blocks.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, what do you see as the biggest challenge within the school system and how do you plan to address the challenge?
Well, I have three. First challenge is finding teachers. I feel that all of our students deserve to have qualified teachers in the classroom and I know this is a problem around, not just in our district, but other districts. So that is a challenge, you know, to make sure that we are constantly finding qualified teachers to provide services to our students. And we can do that, we have been working on it and maybe we can encourage more ideas. One ideal is to, social media is a big thing, you know, get on social media, contact these colleges and things and put it on social media. We need you. And so hopefully, we can beat some of the other schools on, you know, attracting teachers into our district. Because if we can get qualified teachers in our district, then we will be able to improve our student progress. That's the second thing. Student progress is a challenge. We want to make sure that our parents are proud to send their students to our school district. And therefore, when they look at student progress, test scores and things, then we want to make sure that they are able to brag and say, woo, yeah, I have a good school. You know, my kids are, you know, doing great. And we have been working on that as a board and with our superintendent and our administration. We started addressing attendance, trying to encourage attendance. And then we started setting high goals, you know, for our teachers and then we started giving resources to our parents, counselors and we have home aides that go into the homes and work with the parents. And also after-school tutoring, these are some of the things that we have currently working and we're still thinking and brainstorming, trying to add more because we want our students to be successful. So student progress is another one, second challenge. The third challenge is, we want our graduates to graduate with a skill if they're not going to college or to the Army. You know, we have a great career center, but many parents are not aware of all the different trades. And so therefore, it's up to us to educate the parents, educate the students and make sure that they're taking advantage of these opportunities so that they will be better prepared. I do not want them to leave high school without a trade because we know the cost of living is going up and we do not want them to get out of high school and be in poverty. So therefore, that's a challenge and moving forward, I sincerely hope we as a board, administration, the superintendent, we can address those needs. And like I said, it takes all of us working together. We have great minds and I know that we're going to come up with the best solutions for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, what do you see as the biggest challenge within the school system and how do you plan to address this challenge?
Ditto. Gloria pretty much said all the things that we've always talked about and have always kind of like chatted, as a group, as a board. And so you hit on all the, you hit on all the right things there. But if I had, if I had one biggest challenge that we got right down and it was brought up to by Ms. LaShawna, and that is recruitment. We got to bring teachers in here. We got to, our biggest challenge is getting, getting teachers to come in here. Now, we're not, we're not unique in that, that we're having that kind of a challenge because I think all schools are across, not only just the state, but all across the nation. For some reason, we, there's just a shortage of really qualified teachers and we're not, we're not putting up with, you know, it's a whole military term, we're not putting up with ragbags here, okay? We're putting up, we're wanting quality people and we're getting them, we're getting them. I think, I think we're making headway. But still, that's, that's a big challenge for us and that is getting, of all the things you said, I kind of feel that the recruitment process is our biggest challenge right now and it has nothing to do with who we've got doing the recruiting and all of that, doing super job, doing expert job. It's just that, it's just, the folks are just not out there. I don't know if it's that the, that the people are not wanting to, you know, participate in the education process by going to, you know, you know, Shippensburg Teaching College, for example, in Pennsylvania. You know, a friend of mine went there and he wanted to be a teacher and he is a teacher, has done very well. But, you know, people with the passion to be a teacher, I don't know, maybe it's just not out there anymore. Maybe everybody wants to be a, I don't know, an influencer or something, a social scientist or something. But teaching seems to be taking a, taking a hit in our society and I think we're feeling those pains, too. So as far as I'm concerned, the recruitment process or getting good quality teachers is hard to find because we're all trying to, trying to get these guys. And we're doing our, we're doing our piece as well. The question is, how do we meet that plan? Just got to keep, keep, keep hanging at, keep banging that drum. Got to keep banging that drum, got to keep doing all the great things that are being done by the folks in our district that are responsible for that, for that process. I'll put a little shout out in there for my HBCU. I went to West Virginia State University. And so there's a lot of great students, a lot of great teachers there, too. So we just need to find a way to get those folks, bring them to us and have them provide that quality education for our, for our kiddos.
Thank you. Ms. French, what do you see as the biggest challenge within the school system and how do you plan to address this challenge?
Well, I'm going to go a different direction than everybody's gone. I'm going to say money. We are a business. Our school system is a business. We're the second largest employer in Warren Township. I think number one is Community Hospital, I believe. We're the second largest and to reach your concerns and your concerns, we need money. These teachers do amazing jobs, but we can't pay them because we're not getting money from the state. That's, our revenue comes from the state and property taxes. Property taxes have been capped at 1% for residences and we, so we live off of what we get. We, you know, there's other monies, there's grants and there's money from the federal side. But, but the biggest money that we get is our money from the state for our education fund. And if we don't have money to pay our teachers, we're not going to get more teachers. It's going to get harder and harder and harder. I know you're okay with the vouchers and stuff, but Warren Township lost $21 million over the last, since 2017. We have lost $21 million to vouchers. That's $21 million we could have spent on our teachers, on purchasing curriculum, everything. It's, it's a, it's a bad situation and we need to really address it. And I'm here to say, we have got, and what we have to do about it, we have to get parents together, we have to get them to understand this concern and we need to, we need them to go en masse to the State House and start saying, hey, 90% of our kids go to public education, they attend public schools. We need to have enough money. Right now, with the vouchers, you can make $230,000 and get a voucher annually. So when they, when vouchers were first brought out, they were brought out to help the people who don't have as much money to be able to go to a private school if they want. And so that money would go if you had a certain income or below. That income is now $230,000 a year and you can get a voucher. And, and it used to be the kids had to attend public school at least for one year. Now, they don't have to. Now they can just, if their parents were wanting to put them in a private school anyway and had the money to pay it, great, they're going to use a voucher. And so the money that we have for our public schools, they take it off the top and give it to the people going to private schools first. And we have got to do something about that because it's only going to get less and less and less because they never, and they never expected this many people, I don't think. Or if they did, it was, I don't know. But there is so much money going out the door to private schools right now that should be in the public schools. The public schools are for all children. They are a common, a common school that all kids have the right to go to and they're not going to be kicked out of our private, they have to do really bad things to get, to get expelled, but then they still get welcomed back in. So we have really got to look at that situation. I'm just, it's, it's, public education is not cheap and we have got to do something about, and I guess that's me.
Thank you. Okay, so based on time, I know we only got through three of those questions, but there are a few others. So if you would like, after this forum is over, for me to share them with you, just so that you have them and you can address them on your own, through your own format, I will do so. But otherwise, I just want to thank you for your time, for coming tonight, for volunteering to, one, to run for the school board, to be a candidate. That takes a lot of gumption to, you know, to get up here before all of us, before the public and then, you know, to work, all the work that you do behind the scenes. You guys do a lot of hard work. So, one, thank you for running. And then we're just going to ask that everybody go out here in November, make sure you vote. There are four spots open, we have five candidates. And we appreciate everybody's time and effort tonight. So thank you to the council PTA for being here and running this. Thank you to Dr. Hanson and his staff for putting this on their virtual live stream. And again, thank you to the candidates for being here tonight. Thank you, have a good night.